Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the meeting of the Tuesday, September 2nd, School Committee Meaning to Order, and if we may have a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Before we continue, I want to say welcome back, everyone, to a new school year, especially our teachers. At the orientation breakfast last week, I was so moved to see new teachers that I had in school. You probably all feel the same way, but I just think it's such a testament to our school committee, to our schools, rather, and our community that these teachers are coming back and giving back. So it was wonderful to see. So just wanted to welcome you all on this beautiful day. And we will start with public comment. Yes? Yes, we approve the agenda. Yes, I'm sorry, yes, come on up and just state your name, please. Thank you. And before you begin, I'm sorry. Thank you, I'm getting on my cues. This meeting is being audio and video recorded.
Hello, my name is Tamika Gary, and I hope that your children today all had a wonderful day, first day of school. I am coming to the school committee to say that my child did not. I'm going to give you a little bit of history. My son came to me this summer and was in a group chat, and there was one particular young man that was in that chat. I do not know his name, and had a little bit, a few words. I told my son, who just started with the middle school this year, first year, sixth grader, that just ignore him. If he's ever in the group chat with you, you are to get out. Well, today was his first day of school. He saw that boy today. That child is an eighth grader in the middle school. And words were said mainly about me, and eventually it ended up in a fight. The teacher did break, there was a teacher that did break it up. But my son was severely emotionally hurt because this child said, was, it was stated that this child said that he is going to get a friend to come to my child's house to shoot it up. My son went all day because he didn't know who he could speak to, and to the end of the day, and I'm sorry, I'm emotional, he came to my job, and he told me he got into with the child. He explained that he put hands on him, and my child, if anybody knows my child, is not a violent child. He is very sensitive.
Ms. Gary, may I please interrupt you? I would love to speak with you outside if possible, if we can work this out.
No, it's, I just need everybody to know, and I have no problem with doing that. And I'm not going to say the teachers weren't wrong or anything else, but my child came fearful of not going home from school today. He came fearful of not going to school today. I don't know if my child is going to be, he's telling me now, no, but I don't know if he's going to be fearful going to school tomorrow. I did contact the school this afternoon, and they did get back to me. My husband did come up to the, and meet with the principal, and they did speak, and he did say he was trying to review the tapes. He do know which, what the student is and things that happened. But there were steps that did not even fall through. Yes, the teacher broke it up, but the principal did not know. The security officers did not know. Nobody knew to keep on to reporting this for further up. I and my husband will be going to the police station to report this. I will be legally seeking gratifications for my child, because my child has a right to feel safe in school, but he has the right to feel safe going home. We are now making extra precautions of what my child is going to do from now on until then. But it was, the bar was definitely dropped today. It was dropped. I was not even informed of he had gotten into a fight. My child had to come after school to tell me this had happened. He has been in the, I have had children in the elementary, I've had a child of mine that has been my oldest, and I've had gotten phone calls over things. Now with my youngest, and I don't get a phone call. I have had an issue with bullying, and I feel that child is a bully now, and I'm not going to let anyone be my, let alone my child, be a bully or be bullied. There have been times when my oldest, I thought was bullied, and I handled it, and I stopped it. And this child that I am speaking of has had issues, especially if the principal has told us they know of this child. But I'm just coming to you all and letting you all know of what happened today. My child does not feel safe in this school as of right now, and I don't want any parents to have to hear. We have too many things on news right now where kids are coming up to schools and shooting up schools. But he didn't threaten us to come to the school, he threatened to come to our home. My child now does not feel safe. He is a 12-year-old who has, for the last few years, been begging and has been able to go to the park, to his baseball games, his soccer games, on his own. Now doesn't feel safe to do so. And I'm just coming to you all as a parent to let you all know the experience that my child had today. And I'm not crying because, I'm crying because I'm upset more than anything. It's anger coming out, it's frustration coming out. Because I should have known the minute that altercation had happened. The principal should have known, a security officer should have known. This is my child's first time in his school since into this, into this middle school. He doesn't know who to turn to far as a teacher to help him. Everyone he knew that could help him is now in the elementary school, in the elementary school, not here. He doesn't know who to turn to. And for him to go the whole day, and that was, the whole day or half a day feeling this way, is unacceptable. And I answer my phone calls, I'm getting emails from his teachers now saying, hey, this is me. And my thing is, I'm going to email these teachers back and let them know, the minute anything, if my child does something wrong, you contact me right then and there, because I am that parent who is going to be up here. I don't let anything linger around. I am that parent. If I don't get a phone call, please leave a message, and I will get back to them. But I am always in my child's life, in their sport activities, and this is something that I went eight years prior with another child, and nothing of this nature has happened. And I pray this does not happen to another child, especially that's a child that is a young child, and it's an older child that's bigger. My son, don't get me wrong, he is, he looks like he's about 15, he's as tall as a 15, 16-year-old. He's as tall as I am. But he is still young, and I understand that maybe the older kids, because of his height, thinks that they, he's a little bit older, but he's not. He is still, if, to me, and his mindset, and the things that he do, still reminds me of a eight-year-old, a seven-year-old, because that's how sweet he is.
We understand, and thank you so much for sharing your feelings with us. Thank you. Will now, is there any other public comment? Thank you. We'll now move on to the superintendent's update.
Thank you. If I may, through the chair, may I address Ms. Gary for a moment? Ms. Gary, I'd like to speak to you at some point, so I'll be reaching out to you. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome back. We do have some positive things to report. I do want to start by welcoming Courtney Rao Rogers, who is our new coordinator of special education. Courtney, want to give us a wave? Thank you. Courtney comes to us from Newton Public Schools, where she was an assistant principal of Student Services for 17 years. She also served on the Norwood School Committee for eight years as well. So we are very glad she found us and that we found her. We had a great opening week last week, starting with new educator orientation on Monday, August 25th, where we welcomed 39 educators filling out our open teacher, TA, ESP, and administrator positions. We worked throughout the day, acclimating ourselves, particularly the teachers, acclimating themselves, and learning new district and school procedures and protocols. They also met with their mentors and building or department administrators, and the day ended up with a fun get-together at Cisco Brewers, as it usually does. Our three PD days following Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday were very successful. We started our opening day with a keynote address from Amanda Bickerstaff from AI for Education, where she walked our educators through the ins and outs of AI policies, some practices, and meaningful examples. It was definitely an informative introduction and an opportunity to become more comfortable when using AI as a tool in the classroom. We will be focusing on AI throughout this year, so it was a good starting point for all of us. On Wednesday and Thursday this week, staff had opportunities for targeted professional learning in a variety of content areas. Our specialists, nurses, counselors, and other providers had their own content-focused PD on a variety of topics that were specific to their subjects. NES and NIS classroom teachers worked on literacy PD, and the CPS had grade-level team meetings, rich discussion around grading, vision of a CPS graduate, and of course, the new cellphone and personal electronic devices policy. And NHS worked on de-escalation training, had an excellent speaker who worked with them on building culture and climate, and also worked on preparations for the rollout of the Yonder Pouch system for students to store their phones and their devices. And we do plan on providing an update of the Yonder system at our next school committee meeting, after we've lived through a few weeks of the actual utilization of the pouches at middle and high school. And of course, there was time allotted for classroom setup and preparation for students. Sixth and ninth grade students had orientation meetings, and NES and NIS had meet and greets. And overall, I would say it was a very, very successful week. We are ready to open our schools and welcome our students back today. And overall, today was a successful day. And I'm happy to take any questions there or move on to a couple of other things. Any questions? Okay. So I want to give a little update on our bus transportation situation. Once again, we do find ourselves with the challenge of only four bus drivers. The Cape Cod Collaborative lost one of their drivers due to moving off island to reunite with his family from the Philippines. So we have four bus drivers. This is not new to our district. We have enhanced, we have enacted our same plan as last year with an early and late bus run for the airport route, and that serves sixth through 12th grade students only. We will be implementing a colored bus tag system this year after next week, after we have gotten all of our enrollment for buses, bus transportation requests at the end of next week. And students on each route will be able to ride if they have a colored bus tag that attaches to their backpack that is for the route that they are expected to ride on. They have to show this tag in order to board the bus, and once the system is up and running, we will certainly report to you about how it's working. Okay, moving on. E-bikes. We have seen a sharp increase in e-bike usage today. So I do want to take a moment to remind parents and guardians of students with their, with e-bikes, that they must be registered with their school's front office. Students and parents must sign a contract and will be asked to go through a safety course each year. Students are not permitted to ride their e-bikes on campus, but they can walk their bikes on campus. It also seems that there is a new type of vehicle that has become very popular, an electronic, or an electric dirt bike. This bike has speeds of up to 40 miles per hour, and the bike does not have pedals. Therefore, these bikes are in the same class as mopeds and motorcycles, so students with these vehicles must have a license to drive them and must register them as vehicles, not as e-bikes. So we'll be working with the Nantucket Police Department on how to deal with this new group of bikes that we're seeing out near our other bikes. It is important that protocols be followed for the safety of the students riding the bikes, and also for the pedestrians and drivers on our campus as well. So I urge everyone to be paying careful attention and notifying us. And I know high school and middle school will be working hard to make sure that everyone who has an e-bike or a vehicle or a new, new dirt bike style vehicle has all the proper paperwork and documentation for the ability to ride them.
And helmets.
And helmets, absolutely. A reminder that helmets are required for anyone, for bikes, anyone under the age of 16, they are required. So, and then for e-bikes, it's good practice to be wearing helmets regardless. So I have, I can answer questions, or I can move on to enrollment?
Any questions?
No. Okay.
I do have one, just about parking.
Yes.
So will these new vehicles then be assigned a parking space?
We are in the process of working that out. This isn't new to us, having all of these bikes show up on the first day, so we're working on what happens next, where, where they would be stored. But they cannot be stored where the actual bikes are, because there's no way of them moving the bikes by, by hand, so to speak. It's only electric, or it's only motorized. So we have to, we have to move them to a location that is not where there are pedestrians and things like that. So we're going to be having to deal with that.
Thank you.
I will, we'll certainly report on that coming up. So, enrollment. Our starting enrollment this year is markedly lower than our end-of-year totals in June of 2025. We are starting off this year with 1,670 students. This is 54 fewer students than our final count at the end of last year. We do have a smaller kindergarten class this year, only 91 students, and a smaller sixth-grade class, but we will keep a careful eye on enrollment over the course of the year and report changes that we see each month as usual. But we do see a decrease. And that's it. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Yes, one. In terms of the lower enrollment, particularly for kindergarten, is that going to have any impact going forward? And are we seeing any other population trends related to that?
I'm not sure how to answer your question. As far as going forward, we have to keep in mind our class sizes as we're moving forward and how that affects our staffing, et cetera. But we have seen small classes come, we've seen large classes come in, so we have to kind of roll with what we have and what comes to our, to the doors. We do look at births on the island each year, and there are some births, I believe it was last year or perhaps the year before, I don't have the numbers with me at this moment. We do have a bumper crop, so we may be seeing an increase in enrollment for the class, I think the class that starts in 2028, 29. They are currently, I think, one-year-olds are just born this past year. So we'll, I can certainly share some of that information, but it doesn't always dictate exactly what we see when it comes to enrollment in kindergarten class. But as far as enrollment over the course of time, we're evening out. We're not seeing large, the large bubble that caused the construction of the new intermediate school is currently at its end, leaving the high school. So we don't see as many, we don't see as, as many large, large classes. High school right now is, has the most with 590 students?
567.
567, okay. So, thank you.
So I imagine it's easier to deal with reduced numbers, but when there's more children in a bubble year, if that's coming by the sound of it, just want to make sure that we have the services and probably the budget to deal with that.
It is something that we are used to seeing, some ups and downs. So we are working, as, obviously, as we go into budget planning season, we will be working on staffing, looking carefully at all of that. So thank you for bringing that up. Other questions on enrollment?
Were the losses at any particular school?
No, I would say the smallest, I mean, again, the kindergarten class definitely brought down the numbers at NES. However, our numbers are pretty consistent since then. High school has fewer numbers, I think, on their first day, so we're, we're going to see over the course of the next several, several weeks. So we'll, we'll see. It's hard, it's hard to tell. This is, this is the very first enrollment that we have. Things will be a little bit more settled in our October enrollment, and that's why we use the October, October enrollment for our SIMs reporting to the state. So first, first month is always a little bit ups and up and down. So we still have students coming in, there are still students that have not yet been withdrawn, so we're working on all of that. I do have one other thing I'd like to do, and that is introduce our student representative, Danielle Lewis. Thank you, Danielle, for being with us today. We're so excited.
Okay, great. Okay. Moving on to presentations and discussions of issues to the committee, and we will start with the summer school presentation with Cara Evans.
We've been having, apparently, we've been having some issues with the computer here in the system, so we'll do what we can, but not sure if we'll be able to do much in regard to presentation. Thank you. It's not coming on. Got to love technology until you don't, right?
Are there additional packets for people that don't?
We do have one additional packet that is available. The problem was that with all of the handbooks, we did not have enough. The packet was 300 and something pages, so we could not print out.
Right.
This may come on in just a second. bus run for the airport route, and that serves sixth through 12th grade students only. We will be implementing a colored bus tag system this year after next week, after we have gotten all of our enrollment for buses, bus transportation requests at the end of next week. And students on each route will be able to ride if they have a colored bus tag that attaches to their backpack that is for the route that they are expected to ride on. They have to show this tag in order to board the bus. And once the system is up and running, we will certainly report to you about how it's working. Okay, moving on. E-bikes. We have seen a sharp increase in e-bike usage today. So I do want to take a moment to remind parents and guardians of students with their, with e-bikes, that they must be registered with their school's front office. Students and parents must sign a contract and will be asked to go through a safety course each year. Students are not permitted to ride their e-bikes on campus, but they can walk their bikes on campus. It also seems that there is a new type of vehicle that has become very popular, an electronic, or an electric dirt bike. This bike has speeds of up to 40 miles per hour, and the bike does not have pedals. Therefore, these bikes are in the same class as mopeds and motorcycles. So students with these vehicles must have a license to drive them and must register them as vehicles, not as e-bikes. So we'll be working with the Nantucket Police Department on how to deal with this new group of bikes that we're seeing out near our other bikes. It is important that protocols be followed for the safety of the students riding the bikes and also for the pedestrians and drivers on our campus as well. So I urge everyone to be paying careful attention and notifying us. And I know high school and middle school will be working hard to make sure that everyone who has an e-bike or a vehicle or a new dirt bike style vehicle has all the proper paperwork and documentation for the ability to ride them.
And helmets.
And helmets, absolutely. A reminder that helmets are required for anyone, for bikes, anyone under the age of 16, they are required. So, and then for e-bikes, it's good practice to be wearing helmets regardless. So I have, I can answer questions or I can move on to enrollment?
Any questions?
No? Okay.
I do have one, just about parking.
Yes.
So will these new vehicles then be assigned a parking space?
We are in the process of working that out. This isn't new to us, having all of these bikes show up on the first day. So we're working on what happens next, where, where they would be stored. But they cannot be stored where the actual bikes are because there's no way of them moving the bikes by, by hand, so to speak. It's only electric or it's only motorized. So we have to, we have to move them to a location that is not where there are pedestrians and things like that. So we're going to be having to deal with that.
Thank you.
I will certainly, certainly report on that coming up. So. So enrollment. Our starting enrollment this year is markedly lower than our end of year totals in June of 2025. We are starting off this year with 1,670 students. This is 54 fewer students than our final count at the end of last year. We do have a smaller kindergarten class this year, only 91 students, and a smaller sixth grade class, but we will keep a careful eye on enrollment over the course of the year and report changes that we see each month as usual. So, but we do see a decrease. And that's it. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Yes, one. In terms of the lower enrollment, particularly for kindergarten, is that going to have any impact going forward? And are we seeing any other population trends related to that?
Um, I'm not sure how to answer your question. As far as going forward, we have to keep in mind our class sizes as we're moving forward and how that affects our staffing, et cetera. But we have seen small classes come, we've seen large classes come in. So we have to kind of roll with what we have and what comes to our, to the doors. We do look at births on the island each year, and there are some births, I believe it was last year or perhaps the year before, I don't have the numbers with me at this moment. We do have a bumper crop. So we may be seeing an increase in enrollment for the class, I think the class that starts in 2028, 29. They are currently, I think, one-year-olds are just born this past year. So we'll, I can certainly share some of that information, but it doesn't always dictate exactly what we see when it comes to enrollment in kindergarten class. So, but as far as enrollment over the course of time, we're evening out. We're not seeing large, the large bubble that caused the construction of the new intermediate school is currently at its end, leaving the high school. So we don't see as many, we don't see as, as many large, large classes. High school right now is, has the most with 590 students?
67.
567, okay. Thank you.
So I imagine it's easier to deal with reduced numbers, but when there's more children in a bubble year, if that's coming by the sound of it, just want to make sure that we have the services and probably the budget to deal with that.
It is something that we are used to seeing, some ups and downs. So we are working as, obviously, as we go into budget planning season, we will be working on staffing, looking carefully at all of that. So thank you for bringing that up. Other questions on enrollment?
Were the losses at any particular school?
Um, no, I would say the smallest, I mean, again, the kindergarten class definitely brought down the numbers at NES. However, our numbers are pretty consistent since then. We, high school has fewer numbers, I think, on their first day. So we're, we're going to see over the course of the next several, several weeks. So we'll, we'll see. It's hard, it's hard to tell. This is, this is the very first enrollment that we have. Things will be a little bit more settled in our October enrollment, and that's why we use the October, October enrollment for our SIMs reporting to the state. So first, first month is always a little bit ups and up and down. So we still have students coming in, there are still students that have not yet been withdrawn, so we're working on all of that. I do have one other thing I'd like to do, and that is introduce our student representative, Danielle Lewis. Thank you, Danielle, for being with us today. We're so excited. Thank you.
Okay, great, okay. Moving on to presentations and discussions of issues to the committee, and we will start with the summer school presentation with Cara Evans.
We've been having, apparently been having some issues with the computer here in the system, so we'll do what we can, but not sure if we'll be able to do much with regard to presentation. It's not coming on. Gotta love technology until you don't, right?
Are there additional packets for people that don't?
We do have one additional packet that is available. The problem was that with all of the handbooks, we did not have enough. The packet was 300 and something pages, so we could not print out.
Right.
This may come on in just a second. We got it.
There we go.
Oh, great.
Hello, my name is Cara Evans. I am a special liaison at NES, and this summer I had the pleasure of being summer school coordinator. As always, our goals for our summer school program is to maintain learning from the previous school year, to provide enrichment, and of course, to make learning fun for summer. Programs also allow for great opportunities to make connections with our community-based activities and the curriculum. And as always, this summer, our program ran for five weeks, Monday through Thursday, from 8:30 to 11:30, and from July 7th through August 7th. This summer, we had 114 students total from pre-K to high school life skills class. Of those 114, we had 90 of them that we provided extended school year services based on their IEPs. And of course, our amazing staff, I want to thank them because they are the heart of all of this. It was a great summer. We had 43 staff in our program, teachers, service providers, teaching assistants, our nurse, and I'm happy to report that this year we were able to fill each of those positions for our service providers, so OT, speech, reading specialist as well. So we did not need any story services needed in the following school year, which is great. We also had a lot of teachers from MPS and also returning summer school employees as well, which made great for consistency. Still the fun. This year, our program did not allow for field trips because of our budget reduction, but it ended up being a great way that we were able to see that we had the programs come here. So we do have the Sustainable Nantucket Farm that we continued throughout the school for summer program. That was a big hit this year. The students absolutely loved it. We were able to give them more opportunities out there. The transitions were easier than, you know, getting on a bus, being in our lovely summer traffic. So it was another great opportunity for our students to stay on campus and be part of the community. And we also had the NHI come and visit. Emma Young, who is a lovely young woman from the Nantucket Historical Association, she came and discussed with every single classroom, Nantucket Silk Factory. The students were able to learn a little bit of history, that's a part of our island, and made a fun craft. And she did a really great job in differentiating different types of learning for each classroom, which was great. And we hope for next year that we can be able to bring more community programs to the program as well. And every year, this is one of my favorites, we did our summer showcase where all the students in the program made projects, showed any of the work that they were doing. We had a lot of great ideas this year, and of course, it was the first windiest day of the summer school program. So there was a lot of repinning throughout the, throughout the day, but we had a lot of parents come and drop in. It was, you know, during the three hours of the program, so it was great to see, a lot of the kids were excited to see their, their work presented. And just a couple more pictures, just fun summer school learning. We had a lot of happy faces. And some of the, this stuck out to me, a teacher had responded to one of our surveys, our program feedback. The ESY program provided supportive structured environment where students could continue learning and growing. Students were engaged and provided unique learning experiences with the NHI and Community Garden. These learning opportunities connected to their real life outside of school and were fun and engaging for all. I think it's vital that MPS provides this access to continue learning opportunities over the summer. It was an incredibly valuable program that helps our students stay on track with their individual academic goals, academic goals, excuse me, over a long break from the traditional classroom setting. So this is takeaways from the survey as well. The teachers really appreciated the time given in the beginning to prepare for their classrooms because we had repeated summer school teachers and also MPS teachers that also were able to carry over. It kind of allowed for orientation to be a little bit smaller, so we were able to get them in the classroom where they really need the, the time. We did start the registration process. It did start a little bit later this year because of, I'm not sure why, but just a little later, so they would like to see the registration start sooner. I think that was more so for students to let families know a little bit sooner than we anticipated this year. Having the activities on campus, this was like the, probably the biggest hit, other than going out and doing field trips and having everything here. Again, like I said previously, like we would love to have more community-based programs come to summer school next year. And again, it just takes away from them sitting in traffic and on the bus and going to different areas of the island. And again, a lot of positive feedback from staff all around, so. And we look forward to next summer, July 6th through August 6th.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Sure, just, not a question, a comment. Looks like it was great fun and congratulations.
Thank you.
And for getting more organizations involved next year. Hopefully you can find some nonprofits that might be interested.
Yeah.
Good luck with it.
Thank you. And I thank the teachers and the staff. Thank you so much.
Ms. Marlby?
No questions, just.
Shantel.
Congratulations. Looks like it was a great summer. Just a suggestion, Egan Maritime might be a great.
Yes, yes.
Addition to the program because they have a great classroom program. Can someone answer why the registration was so late or was later?
Um, it's always a challenge to identify, you need to identify the students based on teacher recommendation, and if things slow down through that, then things start later. We'll certainly move it forward faster this, this coming year.
Thank you.
Tim? Danielle?
It just looked very, it looked very cute and very fun.
It does look really fun. I'm just curious, so when NHI and Sustainable Nantucket, are they donating their time or is there?
Everything is donated.
Everything is donated.
Yes.
That's great. Yeah, it looks like a blast, so fun. Thank you very much.
I think Mandy's going to test, set it on our computer.
Now we're moving on to the District Improvement Plan, Year Three Action, with Dr. Hallett, Dr. Bardesley, and Assistant Superintendent DeBett.
Okay, thank you. The Nantucket Public Schools District Strategy and District Improvement Plan is a five-year plan that started in 2023. And each year, we add an action plan that is specific to the goals that are set with reflection on the year before and particularly with focus on district level expectations. The District Improvement Plan for this year focuses on the areas that are district departments. The school improvement plans are tied into the district, district improvement plans, but those are a separate presentation. So we will only be presenting today on the action plan, which is at Year Three. I'll start just by explaining that the vision, the mission, and the core values are always the same. They have not changed. We share those in our district strategy, and we also share them in our school improvement plans. So you do see those visions, the vision, mission, and core values each year. We do have in the District Improvement Plan cascading visions for all departments and schools. So when you have this in an electronic format, which you should have through our, through our website, you can open this up and see that the visions for departments and schools are also available. Moving on to our strategic objectives and strategic initiatives, these also have not changed and will not change until we finish our district strategy, five-year plan. So our strategic objectives are three, increasing student outcomes and achievement, securing and maximizing resources, and nurturing a culture of inclusion, collaboration, and communication. Our initiatives are also fixed for the, for these five years. Our action plan is what we are presenting to you today as a draft. So I'm not going to go through every single goal, there are 14 of them, but I will choose a couple of them which are unique and one goal in some of the departments that have more than one. So if you notice on this page, you will see that the school improvement plans are still in draft form, and they will be linked shortly. In some cases, we are waiting for the MCAS results to include, but also time with school council in order to create plans. So we will be seeing those in early October, I believe. So we do have a human resources goal that I do want to share with you because I think it is important certainly to, to show that we are in the process of going through an audit. The goal number one says by June 2026, a needs assessment will be conducted for human resources based on the Department of Education Standards and Indicators Document, which the school committee has had a chance to review at a different, at a different time. We need to do this because there are lots of certain procedures and expectations that are not actually in place, and we need to be tightening those things up. So by doing a needs assessment, we will see specifically things around licensure, things around our processes with hiring and retention. All of that needs to come out so that we can, we can put the appropriate procedures in place and make sure that they're, they're held to expectation of the department event. So that's goal number one. For finance, we are maximizing our funding under federal and state grants and reimbursements through the allocation, through allocation planning. Our, our federal grants titles one, two, three, and four are available to us, but we need to make sure that we are maximizing all of the usage of these, these funds. So we'll be working closely between our finance department, but also curriculum department, schools, et cetera, to make sure that there is clear communication and, and use of grant funding is transparent and, and everybody is knowledgeable about what we're going to be using that funding for, and that is an expectation also of the federal government. So definitely that is an important piece as well. Our district leadership team will be focusing on safety again, as we, as you've heard me say numerous times, including in the opening day remarks to staff, that safety is, is a very important part of this year. And I do hope that we have in place the things that we need to make sure our students always feel safe. By the end of the year, the district leadership team will collaborate to execute a full reunification plan drill with all stakeholders. This is a fairly big endeavor. Think about the airport when they do their drill. So we have a lot of planning to do with this, but we'll be working with our town departments, with the Nantucket Fire and Police Department to plan and prepare and train people for a reunification drill by the end of the year. That is our goal because it is important that we have, we have a true feeling for what reunification is going to look like if we ever had a need. So, so that's a big one. I'll focus on one particular area of curriculum and instruction unless one of you would like to share one of them. Choose one? Okay. We would like to see, let me do the number five, okay. So by June of 2026, we are expanding implementation of applied learning, which is something that you have heard us talk about before. The focus will be on equitable communication and collaboration with instructional strategies, including SEI. This is a big focus for us this year. We have started the process in the, in former years, two years ago with the middle school and one year ago at the high school. This work is continuing on and is, is also being approached also in other, not just middle and high school, but in other, other areas as well. So the whole idea of applied learning with that focus of communication and collaboration is a really important area of our district improvement this year. Moving to English learner education, we will look at, I'll choose goal number seven. By June 2026, ELs in Nantucket Public Schools will demonstrate increased access to rigorous academic language and improved content achievement as a result of sheltered English instruction, professional development, provided to core content teachers and administrators, and the implementation of a piloted elementary co-teaching model. So there's a lot happening in the world of English learner education, and you'll be hearing about that in October when our English learner director will be sharing some, some changes within the department. But there's definitely increased focus on SEI PD. That is something that we are starting out, that the district leadership team, the administrators had professional development at the beginning of our retreat this year in July that focused on using a tool to identify good SEI practices in the classroom. So we're going to be continuing that. And then at the elementary and intermediate level, we're looking at a piloted co-teaching model or collaborative teaching model in classrooms so that students are not missing instruction by being pulled out of elementary classes, but they are receiving English learner instruction within the classroom with that collaborative teaching model. So we'll have more to report to you as time goes on, but this is the plan that we have in place on goal number seven. Moving to special services, I'll look at goal number nine. By June of 2026, all stakeholders, school counselors, social workers, school nurses, and health or wellness staff will increase the usage of student-focused SEL strategies by school counselors, social workers, school nurses, and health and wellness staff. So investigating curriculum resources will be an important part of this, making sure that parent resource guides are available around SEL and that certain things can be shared and used at home, making a parent resource guide that will be online as well. And hopefully, we will see increased time on learning and a decrease in, in student hospitalizations or anything around self-harm or time that students would need to spend outside of school. So definitely, we want to increase our SEL supports for students who are in need. Moving to educational technology, by June 2026, this is goal number 11. EdTech will continue to use best practices of upgrades in configuration to the EdTech equipment and services, including an enhancement of our network reliability as measured by minimum downtime. We have done a lot of work this summer towards improving the viability of our network, and we have two people in place this year, one in particular, a network administrator who's Dave Evans, and he has been working very hard with Northeast Technologies, which is the consultants who are working with us in determining all of the things that need to change with regard to switches and, and other technology areas that definitely need access point increases, et cetera. So all of that is, is definitely a goal that is meaningful and hopefully, we will be able to meet by the end of the year. For facilities, goal number 12, by June 2026, the facilities department will continue to monitor the mechanical systems renovations and other facility, facilities updates of all district buildings by working with outside contractors and staff. So there, the action steps are varied, but they do share some of the areas that we, we feel will help us reach this goal. Anything preventative, preventative maintenance is very important. We need to make sure that our machinery, our systems are up and running and are checked regularly so that we do not lose any, any time in the maintenance and repairs. We are still working hard on the, the plan for the 24 surfside modular office construction. We have a, a project manager who's working on that, starting, we will be sending bids out very soon, so that is in, in process. Also is that in process is the work. Also is that in process is the work and the design and planning of Capizo Stadium and the renovation project there. Camera project is going to be completed at the end of this year. We have new cameras that have been that have been put up or being put up and programmed, upgrades to the Gentex system. So there's quite a bit that falls under this goal, but all of it is manageable and we'll be working hard at moving forward with that. And I'll choose goal number 14, which is the, actually 15 on this one. I like this one. So the athletic department will conduct a review of emergency and safety protocols and continue to work with coaching on coaching, first aid CPR trainings along with Raptor and other emergency trainings with the district and first responder personnel. So in this case, all coaches will be trained in emergency protocols. We always do training with staff with with the coaches, but with some of our newer procedures in place around Raptor, we'll be working with them on those protocols and also in in making sure that they are fully prepared for anything like with CPR and first aid. So all of these action steps we see to be important, especially again around safety and security of our students, both during school and after school. So I gave you a very brief look at this year three department, excuse me, district improvement plan, and I'm happy to take any questions. Also, the assistant superintendents can certainly take questions if you have any around their areas of expertise. Vince?
Yeah, two, if that's okay. One, I just didn't understand. You're talking about the preventive maintenance and then you're talking about some system updates. One of the things I just hadn't heard it before was Gentex system? What is that?
That's our camera system.
Gotcha. And then the second one was you were talking about training for coaches for emergency protocols.
Yes.
Will there be a specific set of protocols for, say, away games for off-site?
That's an that's an interesting question. Off-site emergency emergency protocols will fall under the direction of either the, if we're talking about a different school, for example, if there's an emergency at another school, we would have to follow the procedures of that school particularly. If instead, we're talking about emergency procedures that would happen on a ferry, again, that would really fall under law enforcement, I think, when it comes to that. But our procedures around what happens in an emergency situation on our campus, whether, especially if it's happening during an athletic contest, absolutely are procedures that all of our coaches will be aware of, so.
Thank you.
Esmeralda?
I have no questions.
Chantel?
A few. So I believe it's goal number 10 that mentions the surveys for the for for IEPs. When is the meet, has the meeting already been scheduled?
No.
Okay. And then, as we're talking about system maintenance and updates, do we have any updates on school committee meetings going hybrid?
We do not have any have any updates on that. However, we have been working on that with the town. I think we still struggle clearly here in this location, which means we would have to find another location. And if we have to find another location, we're very limited based on what the availability is for the from the town. So it may become a continued problem that we aren't able to resolve, but we continue to work on it as best we can.
And then, how was the Wi-Fi today? First day of school.
I did not get that many complaints. Hopefully, things went well. Looking at the at staff here, did we have any complaints? I did not hear anything. So I believe that things went well during the day today. That does not necessarily mean that tomorrow will be perfect, but knock on wood. We have seen improvements. We have definitely seen improvements. Yes, we have had moments where Wi-Fi has gone down, but it has come up very quickly. So it may be down for a moment and then it's right back. So that, in my opinion, is a great improvement over what we had been dealing with prior to that. And like I said, Stephanie and the consultants that were here all summer were in our tech closets, making connections, changing wires, working on this and that. Dave Evans has been running around like crazy to make sure that we are as as in good shape as possible to start the year. Obviously, there are still more things that need to happen, but we're in a better place than we were prior. So, thank you.
Tim?
Have we thought of CPR training for all of our students?
We have had CPR training, we had CPR for eighth grade, excuse me, if I may, through the chair, eighth grade, middle school. Is that still happening this year? High school health? I thought we had, didn't we have eighth grade CPR training? Thought that we had had that happen a couple of years back? No?
No, it's always been.
High school? We can look into it. It's a it's a cost, but we can definitely look into how that would work. We have to have the trainers available.
And nice graduation requirement.
We'll look into that.
Danielle?
I'm just curious about the the team teaching model. Would that be the classroom teacher and a TA?
No, English learner.
Okay.
So.
In every class?
Not in every class. We, it's a pilot model. We are working on making sure that there is time during an ELA block and a math block for the English, the ESL teacher to push into the class and collaboratively teach, which means working on the same material with groups of students. It is still a work in progress, but it is a better plan going forward. It's what the Department of Ed is moving towards. It's what English learner instruction is looking looking to be because other otherwise, children are taken out of classes where they're losing instruction, tier one core instruction. ESL instruction is still considered tier one, but there is certainly, it is certainly better to have an overlay as opposed to to separate instructional models happening at the same time. So we're working on that. For newcomers, it is still a necessity to pull newcomers in order to give them very targeted instruction to get them started. But for students who are not brand new, this collaborative teaching model is something that we are really looking looking to move towards. So this year is our kind of our jumping off year. So we can certainly share more on that.
Thank you.
It does happen at the special education level as well. So special education teachers can also collaboratively teach with with their general education teachers. That happens at middle and high school quite a bit.
Thank you. Anything else? Anyone? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to school and employee handbooks, starting with Kim Albertson.
Hello.
Hello.
Kim Albertson, the elementary assistant principal under Principal Kubisch. We have very few changes in our handbook this year. We did a lot of work in the last couple of years. The few changes that we do have are, of course, we updated terms and positions of you all. We added titles and changes to the administrative team through chapter one. In chapter two, under parent responsibilities, we've talked about, we've beefed up a little bit of our volunteer opportunities and we're working on that with a committee at our school right now, so that'll change a little bit. We've added some language on what the opportunities would be in the handbook. Under attending NES, we've just worked on our language for arrival as we've changed our first hour needs with students. And so we just wanted to make sure that that was in our handbook so parents really understood what the process was. We initially had piloted it last year and now it's working well, and so we're going to keep it in there. Under chapter four for academics, we've added in language consistent with the state case that has just been modified for inclusion and encouraging respect for human and civil rights. So that is language that we've consistently done throughout all of our handbooks throughout the district. In chapter eight, under student safety, very minimal changes. We've included Raptor for teacher process for what we're doing as far as when drills and incidents happen. We also have reflected the new cell phone policy for our school, which is certainly elementary. It really is impacting smartwatches, not so much phones for us, but we certainly have adopted that into our handbook as well to be consistent with district. And then, of course, our first food services, we remain free lunches.
Thank you, Kim. Any questions? Still no cupcakes? Oh, thank you. And Donna Johnson?
Hi there. Donna Johnson, assistant principal at NIS, and I'm lucky to follow Kim because a lot of our changes are similar. We have updated school committee terms, staff adding our assistant superintendents and Courtney Row Rogers. Our bigger changes start on page eight. Our school council did a lot of work last year on volunteering, so the language with volunteering has become a little bit more detailed. We did send home brochures to every family for the summer mailing and I think even got a couple of volunteers who have inquired to come to our school. So so far, it's working. The community school information on page 10 has been updated thanks to Alicia. We also have opt-out information on page 18, similar to what Kim just mentioned in terms of curriculum and civil rights. So our cell phone policy was updated to align with the policy that was adopted by school committee. And we do have cell phones and we do have smartwatches, but they're off and away and smartwatches should be on school mode during the day and the consequences are outlined. E-bikes, we also had to change. We moved from an all-out ban to the reality that our students do have them and they even have those electric dirt bikes. So we did, we kind of aligned ours with CPS NHS where electric and pedal-assist e-bikes need to be registered with NIS and they do need to take a bike safety course. We also defined what e-bikes were, that they have pedals and can be pedaled. So electric dirt bikes or bikes without pedal pedals are not permitted on campus. Our kids aren't even close to the age to be able to drive those. So those are our big changes.
Thank you, Donna. Any questions? Any questions? I just have one, not to put you on the spot.
Sure.
But when someone does want to opt out of that particular curriculum, what's the process for that?
Generally, they get and they email Becky Janda and they need to talk about what the concerns are, what the actual curriculum is. Last year, we did have a lot of questions because the state had adopted new wellness standards that were a bit controversial with a lot of parents. Our district hasn't adopted them, so a lot of times, it's a conversation. If they did want to opt out, we would find an alternative activity for them to do if it was part of a curriculum that they were uncomfortable with.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Donna. Adrian Lombardi, CPS.
Hi there. Without kind of getting into a huge conversation because Dr. Hallett has mentioned that we'll be having a presentation about the yonder pouches, our cell phone policy, that is that is the biggest edit for us aside from some of the terms in personnel. But we've always had a cell phone policy at CPS where we don't allow cell phones. So that hasn't changed in the essence of what we have in our handbook. It's really just the tool of the yonder pouch that is mentioned that we'll be implementing. Been working with our staff to prep for that and planning to implement that on Monday. So after we have a school assembly. But again, the the cell phone policy is is the same. We don't allow them. They need to be off and away, and now in this case, they're off and away in a pouch that includes the Apple watches. And so by off and away, that means they can't tap into a headphone or anything like that with their phone either. The other kind of smaller adjustment that we had in our handbook was around tardies and we have implemented this for a while where we have a progressive discipline around the amount of tardies that our students have and associating that to office detentions. And after they reach 20 tardies in one trimester, they are, there's a conversation that's had between making up some time on Saturdays. And that's worked out with Mr. Horton and the parent and the students. But that's after a very long progression of getting there. And we do have students who who are chronically tardy and we're really working with the families to try and get kids here on time. But those are our two kind of, the language is just tweaked a little bit, really around the cell phone. It's just to add that yonder pouch language as the tool.
Thank you. Any questions? Vince?
No, no, thank you.
Esmeralda?
Yeah.
Chantel?
Not a question. Under the terms for the school committee, the years.
Are they off?
Yeah, for Laura and Esmeralda, those are the only ones.
Okay. I can do that. Thank you.
That's all.
Tim? Danielle? I just, Adrian, I'm sorry. I just have one question about the Uber Eats.
The what?
You know, when last year, they had the delivery of lunches. Have you all given any thought to that?
Well, we actually brought this up, me, I guess, who was in our yonder Zoom meeting? So we're anticipating the pouch being, you know, truly the phones off and away. That should minimize the access, not just to our students getting food orders and deliveries, but also we often have students bypass our nurse and just kind of text mom or dad to come pick them up because they're not feeling well. So just, again, being able to go through the the course, you know, our phones are always available in classrooms. They can dial out and reach a parent and, of course, the front office. But and I had a student today who we couldn't get through on his, on my phone in the classroom. And so, you know, he went to the office and used the phone just so it's his own phone, so it's not, you know, in the hallway or whatever. And that would be the case if they were locked in. If there was a situation where they couldn't get through or they're having trouble, they would go to the office and be able to work with the front office staff to unlock their phone and and kind of troubleshoot that way. So but I'm hope, we're hopeful that that will help with the the takeout food. And some of our families too, they they make food for a living, for lunch, for people in our community. And so often, it is dropping just another meal off that that they do. So we're hopeful. We'll see.
Okay. Thank you, Adrian. And Tracy Melo for NHS. Am I right? Yes, okay.
Hi, Tracy Melo, one of the assistant principals at NHS along with Jen Saradellis. You might remember from last year, we did quite a large overhaul of our handbook, so we're pretty quick. Ms. Hyland was reviewing the principal letter to see if there were updates needed, which I think there might be some minor things, but not too much is changing there. Chapter one, updating school committee roles and terms and updating when we have our first school council members, a meeting, we'll update the members if necessary. No changes to chapter two. Chapter three, really minor changes for to emphasize some statements and clean up some awkward wording for clarity. Chapter four, the academics, as Kim and Donna had already mentioned and explained, we've added that new language that was a result of Momad versus Taylor, and we also adjusted the mobile technology heading to reflect policy IJNDD. No other changes until the addendum where we did cut and paste the entire school committee policy in there, and there's a link in there as well. Other than that, pretty good.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Tracy. Yeah, Vince?
Yep, just one question. For academic integrity, just looking at it, do you plan to include something on AI and managing how artificial intelligence it works?
Our school committee tech department has written a policy, so when the kids sign on or when staff signs on to their computers, there is a blurb in there about that, and I think we do mention it under plagiarism, but we are also, as a district, have purchased school AI so that students can learn responsible use and teachers can program tutors or help facilitate lessons in that way, using that. I think, I, I might be wrong, but we might predict that after this year of school AI, we might be coming back next year with some, some additional language.
Thank you. Esmeralda?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Shantel?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Tim? Danielle?
Thank you. Thank you.
Just to clarify, if I may through the chair, the, the AI policy is not actually a school committee policy, it's a guidelines. It is available on our website. I'm happy to share that with you. We have not moved towards policy simply because it is quite new, and a lot of districts and a lot of advice that we've received has been to wait a little bit and see what comes, what comes of all of this in the coming year, so.
I have one more question that's kind of overall. I noticed that, I share your fatigue. I noticed that you cannot go onto the website, unless I'm wrong, and, and there's no staff directory that you can only access it through Aspen. Is that correct?
We do not have a staff directory based on privacy. So, there are, we are in the process of making some adjustments, so at least there is, I believe we'll have staff names under schools. And if I may ask Katie to, she's been working on that, so.
I see. So, right on the website, so you don't necessarily have to be, okay. Thank you.
Sure. I don't have it displayed here, but we do have an updated 2526 employee handbook. There are no substantial changes other than terms, some title changes, and that's it. Everything else has remained the same. So, school committee adjustments have been made, the, some title changes to staff, addition of the coordinator of special, special education and the assistant superintendents. Nothing else after that has changed.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
And that's it.
All right. And school committee goals 2025, 2026. This is me. So, on August 19th, our committee met in a workshop to set goals for the year ahead, focus on aligning with Desi's priorities while also focusing on what matters to us here at our school. So, our goals really were highlighted in three key areas. We all, as a committee, talked about school visits and instructional materials and staying connected to classrooms and seeing those instructional materials in real time. We all were wanting to see that. Student safety, continuing to prioritize the well-being of every student, and with Angela Patterson joining Cassie to support our students, that is obviously a huge win for us. And then also governance and support, supporting our superintendent and admin and teachers while keeping student achievement across all areas at the center of our work. So, those were the key areas that we focused on with.
Thank you.
Any questions? And now we can move on to committee discussions and votes to be taken. Vote to approve the donation from the Nantucket Golf Club Foundation to the Nantucket Community School for $15,000 for tuition assistance for after-school and summer childcare. May I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote to approve the donation from Remain Nantucket for $12,500 to the Nantucket Community School for marketing and communications.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote to approve the July 22nd executive session meeting minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote to approve transfers and invoices?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Subcommittee and work group report. Anyone? Okay. The agenda for the next meeting.
If I may, before I discuss the agenda for the next meeting, I do want to mention the proposed dates for changes for our school committee. So, if I may do so, it is in your packet
Thank you.
Towards the end.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Myself. So, the next five dates, we have made some proposed changes to, NCTV has been able to accommodate us, so the dates will be Monday, September 22nd at 6:00 PM, Wednesday, October 8th at 6:00 PM, Monday, October 27th at 6:00 PM, Monday, November 17th at 6:00 PM, and then we have a proposed Monday, December 8th, 6:00 PM, possibly workshop. So, obviously, that, these are proposed. We've worked with the, with NCTV. We do have a few other folks that we do need to speak to around usage of this room, so we'll let you know if anything changes, but these are now in place. So, we'll make sure they're posted on the website. I just wanted to let you know about that.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. For our next meeting, we will be looking at meeting with our school resource officers. We hope to share advanced placement results. We will discuss fourth quarter budget updates, talk about the budget planning calendar and budget directives, and there'll be some votes on the handbooks that you heard about today.
Great. All right. Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
And welcome again, Danielle. All right, well, enjoy your jerk chicken Tondos.
Very excited.
Does he marinate the chicken overnight?
He's been marinating it for two days. Yeah. Yeah, it's close to like
They make them there?
Oh, my God. So, there's like, at the side of the lobster trap, they have like a Jamaican food counter.
Really?
And you can get like, like proper authentic chicken.